It's seven o'clock, so we will go ahead and begin the night's meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody to Dayton City Council Meeting for July twentieth, twenty, twenty twenty-one. Roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Member Volter.
Here.
Member Neary.
Here.
Member Neiman.
Here.
Member Kelly.
Here.
Member Lovins.
Here.
Member Basler.
Here.
City Administrator Fawcett.
Here.
And City Attorney Edmondson.
Not here. Almost a full house, I appreciate your presence. Now, if you'd like to rise for a moment of silence, I'd like your leaders, please.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, we have a couple of things on the agenda for this evening, a second reading regarding Open Records Act and a first reading for to amend the budget. I believe a lot of people might know why we're doing that. So, I'd like to open up the podium for any public comments that would regard this legislation. So, if you have any comments regarding this legislation, please step to the podium. You have five minutes to speak the case, and please sign your name and address on the pad up there.
Mayor, a few guests are here to speak about the intersection issue. Do you want them to do that now?
We'll do that later, sir.
Okay, thank you.
This is just for legislation.
Understood, thank you.
So, anybody with that legislation? All right, we're going to close it in one.
Do we know what it is?
Legislation, I just mentioned it. The Open Records Act, and also there is legislation regarding updating the budget.
Okay, so if we don't know how you're amending the budget, how can we comment?
We'll talk about it when we get to each, we'll talk a little bit about that.
It's a first reading. We'll have a second reading on August, I think, third, which will be the first Tuesday of the month. So, if your answers aren't tonight, then you'll have an opportunity to speak on August third, I believe. Good. All right, everything is closed, then, for public comment. So, Member Ledger, we have a second reading of number twenty twenty-one, number twelve, amending the Dayton City Code of Ordinances for Open Records.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, ordinance number twenty twenty-one, number twelve, in the ordinance amending section thirty-six point oh-five, section thirty-six point oh-five seven, and section thirty-six point oh-nine A of the Dayton Code of Ordinances, to update the manner by which open records are received and amend the city's response time to these records requesting from three to five days, and that is the second reading.
So, just by way of background, Kentucky Legislature asked this Kentucky Attorney General to update the open records provisions, and this is what we have to do in order to comply with that. You also have a certificate given to sign saying that you've got a copy of those details, and we submit that to the Department of Transit and Transportation.
So, changing the amount of time for us to respond from three to five days per the Kentucky requests?
Let's see, yeah.
So, we have the second reading. Do I have a motion to carry twenty twenty-one, number twelve?
So moved.
Moved by Number Volter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Justice in person, please. That opens up for comments amongst council. Do we have any comments regarding this legislation? All right, we're going to go ahead and close comments. Roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Member Basler.
Aye.
Member Volter.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
The ayes have it, passes. The second piece of legislation we have this evening is a first reading for the twenty twenty-one, number thirteen. This amends the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two budget. Ms. Ledger, would you please do a first reading?
City of Dayton, Kentucky, ordinance number twenty twenty-one, number thirteen, in ordinance amending the city of Dayton, Kentucky's annual budget for fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-one, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, estimating revenues and resources, and appropriating funds for the city to the full extent authorized by KRS eighty-two point oh-two and interpretive case law, and that's a first.
Oh, do we look back on this?
Sure, please.
So, this issue came up at the last council meeting. Chief Atkins made presentations about the issues that the fire department was dealing with in terms of keeping employees and having our department being competitive with other departments in the region. We are having a difficult time keeping employees and attracting employees right now to the fire department. So, after some of that discussion, I met with City Administrator Frank Moroff in Bellevue, who's here tonight, as well as the chief. We met with the captains in the department, worked with Mayor Baker and Mayor Cleves in Bellevue, and we came up with a plan, which I presented to council, to achieve what the fire department wanted, which was a nine thousand dollar raise to put us, we're not quite where we need to be, but it's about halfway there. Half that money is coming from American Rescue funding that we're getting from the federal government for that raise, and the other half will be an adjustment to our budget to create permanent raise for those guys in the department. We also, because we have salary parity in the city with police and fire, we're also reaching into American Rescue funds to provide one-time bonus to the police department, too, so that both departments have sound parity. So, that's what this is about, amending our budget, which was approved in June, to allow for those races for both police and fire.
Thank you. Any other discussion amongst council?
So, the police is a bonus?
This is a bonus. We will have to, next budget session, address that issue because the fire department got a permanent raise, and we'll have to do something to balance that out, but we can wait until the next, they're getting the same amount as the fire department right now, they're just not getting a raise like, forty-five hundred dollar raise like the fire department's giving right now, but that's something we'll have to address in the next budget session. They're getting the same amount of money, it's just not permanent raise yet.
Understood, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you guys for making that quick decision and moving the ball forward on this one, if you needed, so thanks for making the arrangements.
I think Chief Atkins spoke at last, and Mr. Hall spoke at the last meeting on Tuesday. On Thursday, we sat down with the mayor and city administrator from Bellevue to discuss it and to make quick-moving decisions, so it was not taken lightly, it was taken very seriously. We appreciate our firefighters and the police, and this is a good thing for the city of Dayton.
Frank, since we shared the fire department with the city of Bellevue, I know you guys took some action, would you share with our council what you all have done so far?
Well, we transferred a hundred and forty thousand dollars to support this endeavor, and I just fully support what you're doing here. I don't know how far you want me to go into the detail of it, but...
Well, you all did, you were first reading of your budget plan.
Yes, and it was unanimous.
And you have a second reading coming up, I guess, in August as well?
Yes, yes.
You and I are going to get together for rough details about how these bonuses work and all that stuff.
Right.
To comply with state law and federal law, so that's our next...
There's an agreement, we've got it ironed out.
Right.
And then we're going to have to figure out how the funding of it, we haven't received the American Recovery Act funding yet. I'm told we're supposed to get it this month.
That's what we're hearing, so, but we have some work to do, but we have the problems in place, we just had a pin to it.
Right, thank you, thank you for that.
Number Volter and I are both on the fire board, I guess it's a question for you two and for the chief, will we have to amend the budget that the fire board has approved?
Yes, I would say once, once it has been, both cities have ratified the amendments to their budgets, and we will have to go back and amend our budget to show both the revenue and the expense.
And that'll have to be voted on and passed by the fire board?
Correct, yes.
Okay, then I recommend that as soon after both second readings are voted on and hopefully approved, that we schedule a fire board meeting to get it in place.
We have a fire board meeting scheduled, a Wednesday after Bellevue's council meeting.
Thank you. Want to make sure all the ayes are dotted, the t's are crossed.
I appreciate that. Any other comments from council regarding twenty twenty-one, number thirteen?
Well, just that I think our citizens need to understand that if this action wasn't taken, we probably would not have a fire department within several months. Our neighboring municipalities have been, you know, kind of cherry picking our people off, not that, and I can't blame anybody that left the city when they're leaving for ten, twelve, fourteen thousand dollars more a year, and if this, this action wasn't taken by the city government, we'd be in a bad way. So, I just want everybody to understand that this was a very necessary action.
Thank you, Member Volter. Any other comments? All right, moving right along. Next up, this is a public meeting regarding the proposed changes to the intersection of O'Fallon Street, Fifth Street, Manhattan Boulevard. We're going to have a presentation from Mr. Mike Yeager, he's our city engineer, about potential design and changes in this intersection. We are going to welcome any audience comments regarding this. Does anybody have any comments, or should we do that after the presentation?
After.
After, yeah, let's see what you get, Yeager's...
I would just do just an introductory. I asked Mike to do this because we've had a number of complaints down there, and there have been some close mishaps, accidents, unfortunately, nothing serious. We have, this intersection has both a lot of pedestrians walking on it, because they go up to the, up to the trail, a lot of traffic coming from several different directions. I don't know that it was originally designed to be like this, I think this is what we've ended up getting, and I'm sure the council will talk about it, people have been here a lot longer than I have, but I asked Mike, who's been our city engineer for a couple of months, to kind of put together some preliminary drawings and just discuss some traffic flow issues, and Mike used to be with Kentucky Department of Transportation, he was a city engineer in Covington, and he now works for the private engineering firm. Worked with Mike a lot in the past, and he's a very fine engineer, so I asked him to do this little presentation together. Mike?
Thank you, Jay. Thanks for having me tonight, I apologize, I'm a new listener, it's nice to meet everybody finally in person. We also work as the city engineer for Bellevue, and so this really works out when cases like this come up, because I found the same line is right down the middle. So, this has been something we've been talking about in Bellevue for several months, even before starting here in Dayton, so I think everyone's more than familiar with the intersection, so I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail about some of the issues, but clearly just you can go out there for five minutes and watch traffic and kind of see this firsthand. So, one of the biggest things that popped out right away to me is just the pedestrian safety and trying to get across the intersection, trying to figure out where to go, so I think, you know, we've gone back and looked at some previous old aerial photos, and the sidewalk used to be all the way extended, and so now a lot of times we see pedestrians coming up, they think it's the sidewalk, and see cars coming up, they feel like it's a turn lane, and so right off the bat, that's a really significant conflict area. So, that, that was one thing. A lot of people weren't stopping at stop signs where they were, so it's, it's kind of a free-for-all, and we've got a parking lot there, too, so it's, it's a mix of vehicular issues, pedestrian issues, and things like that, and so, so we did go out, visit the site, and the group, you know, talked about some ideas, and we just went back and hung them on paper. So, really, tonight, just want to go through with some of the preliminary ideas we have, but really want to get feedback from you all, because you guys live this every day, and may have some things that we're not thinking of. There are kind of some tier-type approaches, because one thing that we also know is that a lot of people rely on O'Fallon to get out onto Route Eight, Fairfield, whatever number the state calls it now, because when you come out some of these other side streets, and there's not a stoplight, and you've got some parked vehicles, it's, it's, just want to hold your breath and kind of hit the gas and get out there. So, we understand that the signal is a big reason why people want to come out of O'Fallon, and so council member Neary, I thought, had a really good idea about talking to the transportation cabinet and seeing if we could potentially get one of the other side streets to get a signal. One, just working there and working with them regularly, it's not, it's, it's not, it's just cut and dry, it's asking for a signal and they put one in, it's all, they've got the manual on uniformed traffic control devices, M U T C D, everything's based on traffic counts and things like that, so it's very difficult to get a new signal, but there is an existing signal at Urban Terrace, and so right now, it's one-way away from that, but if you look at making it one-way to the other direction, or potentially even two-way, the signal's already there, so that there is a chance to at least have a secondary approach to get onto the main drive. So, we have had some email communication back and forth, I think the response has been a little bit gray, but, but what it sounds like is they would be open to considering that, and that would be an option, so if that happens, I think that kind of opens up some more possibilities. The other thing that's a possibility is providing a connection from Berry to Manhattan Boulevard, so you have another way in and out of Manhattan, so I think if that happens, that kind of provides some wiggle room, too, where not necessarily everybody would have to come out of this approach of Manhattan Boulevard, if they had another way to get out on Berry, then that may be a possibility, so I did a lot of talking on the first slide, but just wanted to give a little bit of background. Sorry, I should have watched how you did this, Jay.
Hit the down button, shouldn't work.
There you go. So, right away, an easy fix is just achieve an easy fix, I should say, inexpensive, is just coming out and doing some pavement markings and really making sure that these stop signs are clear. So, that's, I don't do the design in the office, I'd help come up with ideas and other guys do that, so this is just me throwing some stuff down on the area real quick, but the red is supposed to be a stop sign. Putting in stop bars, we think will just call more attention to the stop condition, and then also just really creating this edge line where the sidewalk really was or should be, just to really demarcate for drivers that that's not, that's not for cars, that's for pedestrians, or it should just be left alone. So, a really easy fix would be to come out and just do some striping, clean that up, make sure we've got really highly visible stop signs and putting in that edge line.
So, Mr. Yeager, are you proposing that you have, that there's currently not a stop here?
Right.
There is one here, so we would have one here and then one here as well, is that what you're saying? There's a stop sign on this pole here, so you would stop, and then fifteen feet later you would stop, and then ten feet later you would stop.
That's the way it's set up. I don't know that the one that's here is super critical, just because you've only really got cars turning right, so you don't have any closing traffic coming this way, so I think you really have to...
Could you do away with that, possibly?
You could, or, or you could, but I think it's really open either way. The only conflict you really have is that cars are coming out on the parking lot, and really turning, yeah, and going straight through to Ford, but...
In that design, it protects the pedestrian walkway going to the sidewalk, yeah, so putting a stop sign there makes much more sense.
I think this one's needed. This one, I think you could have some conversation, and it's not necessarily needed, but it doesn't hurt anything other than you've got to stop three times to get out.
You could do away with that stop sign, and put a sign yield on, yeah, I mean, some other sign right there.
Although, if you're coming from O'Fallon and going to Ford, that third stop sign that's currently not shown in the picture on Fifth, it's not going to prevent cars from coming. So, if you're turning left down Ford, they're just going to come straight through the stop where, where it is now, so that's...
If you're going straight to a stop sign, if they're turning left, they have to yield to you, do they not?
They don't.
But they don't do nothing at that stop sign.
That's why we're here. Mr. Yeager, one of the, one of the issues that we discussed was the sidewalk coming down Manhattan Boulevard at the end there is, yeah, it's all rocks and landscaping. You're also proposing to extend that sidewalk out, so there would be a cost for that.
Right, and it would be to put in an escalator, I think you'd want to make it ADA accessible, so you'd put in a curb ramp with a truncated dome, so that would, there would be some costs there, too.
I maintain that putting the stop bars on the street, you're always looking at the street to see if you're going to run over something, and that's why a lot of people don't know the stop sign, it's just a secondary reminder to stop.
Good idea.
I think, I think the painting would definitely help. What would be the, do we have an estimate on the cost of just the painting?
No, I can check with Rick on that, I mean, that's a, I probably want to put the laminated stop bars, what's that called?
Thermoplastic?
Yeah.
That lasts a lot longer. It's, it lasts really, like, the life cycle cost of the thermoplastic is three years, so every year, and it ends up, it's more cost upfront, but it looks nicer and it lasts longer.
Do you have other proposed solutions?
Yes.
Why can't we, the stop sign on O'Fallon, why can't that be moved down further? Where the two sidewalks intersect, the other one, across the street, yes? If that would be moved down further, and have the sidewalk put back coming down O'Fallon, and the sidewalk coming down Fifth, that stop sign, if it would move closer, everybody would be able to see.
Way closer to the intersection, not...
The only problem is there's a wall there that, if you're coming down, what is that, Fourth Avenue, you can't see traffic, and they're not stopping there, they're coming through there pretty quickly.
If you move that stop sign down, you can.
That, that stop sign is a big problem, because a lot of traffic, when they pull on, go, when they're going north on O'Fallon, either they don't see it, or don't pay any attention to it, because it is not exactly next to the road surface. It is recessed over.
Okay.
And that is, I think that creates some of the problems for those of us who have to try to get through that intersection every day.
It's not, it's, the stop sign needs to be closer to the road, rather than closer...
Why not put the sidewalk back there?
Well, yeah, I think that's the symptom of the fact that the sidewalk's not there, so when they move the sidewalk out, they also move the stop sign in, and so people, people don't see it because they think, like you said before, that it's a turning, essentially a turning lane.
Yeah, we're going to get there, that's, that's one of the...
But I think moving, you could move the stop sign out closer to the, in the turning lane now.
The people that stop over on Fourth Street can see the people. I thought, we were just down, and we, we stood where it should be, we think it could be, and there's no problem seeing.
So, we, so this is just me popping things in, it's not exact, of course, but the one thing, if you're talking about scooting it closer to the intersection, you just want to make sure that you've got the stop bar and the crosswalk in between the stop sign and the intersection, just so cars are stopping before they get to the crosswalk, but...
But putting the sidewalk there, too, helps with pedestrians.
Right.
Because you put it coming down O'Fallon, coming across Fourth Street, you've got your sidewalks, you've got a stop sign where everybody can see.
Right, so we can put the stop sign, this is just the very temporary easiest fix. Every other scenario we have is re-establishing the sidewalk and tying that completely in as the long-term solution, or it could be a short-term solution, it's just more costly, but, but we think that this would work as an easy fix, if you just want to do a stripe and put the, and the stop sign can still come out into what the pavement is today. So, I think you could still get the same visibility with the stop sign, but definitely, I totally agree that the sidewalk is the better, safer fix, it's just more costly.
Because if you go back behind that, with the wall, if they stop at it, you can't see them because they're coming over Fifth.
Right.
One of the issues that one of our citizens here, Brandon Hall, brought in the pictures that he showed me a little bit earlier, was this pine tree here really obstructs a lot of vision for Fifth Street, for here, looking up, and then there's another pine tree here that also blocks the vision. I'd be cheap to take down those two trees, just this one at the end, and this one at the end.
Right, first one needs to come down immediately, that one at the end right there.
So, the other day, we, a couple council members and myself sat in Miss Shepherd's front yard and watched, and people blew through that stop sign, and I think she, Ms. Lovins is correct, and she says that tree is, was carrying that sign. It really doesn't serve much purpose.
Is it our tree, or is it Family Dollar tree?
I believe it's our tree, it's supplied by...
I think it's the homeowner's association tree.
It's supplied by the homeowners.
Yeah, I think that that is maintained by the homeowner's association of Manhattan Harvest, we have talked to them, I don't think they have a problem with that, but need to get their permission.
The red line is the property line, so that is, that's showing on the Family Dollar sign, but...
But the developer put those in.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, I think they maintain...
They probably were small when they put them in, and they'd go...
They were kind of small, they're kind of...
Were they?
They were pulling the trees.
But that one needs to come out.
The one, the one there by the gravel, where the...
And the Family Dollar?
That one, too.
That one really needs to go.
I was going to ask, so on O'Fallon, when you actually start coming up towards the light, a lot of times what you see is the traffic coming on O'Fallon, doesn't really realize that it's a two-way street, and will start coming over, and it's really tough if you're turning onto O'Fallon to the left, so maybe just having a line to divide to show that that lane is a lane...
Like a turning line?
Yeah.
Yeah, like a, a middle divider to show that this side is, the traffic coming this way and this side is going down.
It's like on Sixth Avenue, you've got the yellow line in the middle.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, because right now, sometimes you'll have to end up on a curb just to get down O'Fallon.
It's a good point, yeah, good point. Well, one of the issues there is that I believe O'Fallon is only twenty-nine feet wide, and you have a parking on Bellevue side up towards the corner, so that would be three lanes at ten feet, is that acceptable by standards?
Yeah, typically a parking lane's eight feet, so, so as long as you still have...
So, you could stripe it?
You'd have room for L.A. Main Street, I understand, and a parking lane.
Okay.
And then parking also causes stacking issue at times, doesn't it? Is there a stacking issue there, do we all have the right turn?
Yes.
Big time.
Yes.
That's something we need to talk to the city of Bellevue about, I guess, whether it's...
We could work together on that.
Okay.
I was going to ask one, sorry if I'm taking a little, but the entrance to the Fourth Street, is that supposed to be a one-way going down? Because a lot of times you'll find cars coming up from the apartments down at the bottom corner, and they're treating that like a double-way street, so sometimes you'll get blindsided, so maybe some signage to note that that is a one-way, and that Fourth Street is actually back there, trying to tell people where Fourth Street starts is almost impossible right now, so some kind of signage just to not tape that.
Right now, is there only do not enter signs on the entrance?
I think there's nothing there.
There's nothing, there's...
It's primarily, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not for the people that live on Fourth Street, because they're already pointed.
Correct.
It's the couple of houses here.
Yes. Okay. Start coming, yeah, they'll start going back up.
But actually, I mean, below the avenue, we need to look into getting quite a few do not enter signs, especially like when that Berry connector, because I'm on Fourth Street, and it's all day long. I mean, I don't understand why people can't see all the cars parked one-way, but, I mean, it's amazing, all day long in front of my house, you know what I mean? People going the wrong way.
Oh, they go the wrong way on Fifth Street all the time, too, so...
So, Mr. Yeager, this solution here would really only, I mean, it's a quick solution, which we need a solution, at least some type of solution soon and see how it works. It would only require the stop bars and the sidewalk paint, the sidewalk edge painting there at O'Fallon and Fifth, and then the removal of those rocks and replacing with concrete, and then maybe even taking down those trees obstructing the view.
And removing the stop signs, and removing the one stop sign down at the, at the cross walk, right, crosswalk.
And I'd put that tree on top priority, get that thing out.
I want to kind of go back and revisit the comment you made about the lot traffic light at Urban and Fifth. I, I think that's almost as much of a dangerous issue coming up, like just tonight, I had to turn left coming up line today, and there were cars parked all the way up like this. I just had to kind of ease out and just pray, because, and that's, I mean, that's, when you're turning right, it's bad, but when you're turning left, so if they could really make that a two-way street on Urban with the light there, I think that would save so many people from, because people go by my house, I'm at Fourth at Urban, and people go by my house all the time, trying, going all the way down, you know, trying to find a way to get out, but they can't go that way. So, how seriously are we looking into exploring that?
We just started the conversation to see if it was even a possibility. So right now, there's not a signal obviously for the urban terrace approach, so the state said if they were to approve it, it'd be the city's cost to upgrade the signals and add. So probably be at least one or two new poles and signals so that that gets into an experience, but.
We've talked about it for years, honestly, just, and felt that we, I guess, couldn't do anything about it, but if we can, I think it saves a whole lot of traffic coming up Vine and Walnut, you know.
It actually came up for a council vote about four years ago and that idea was defeated. And that was to make it one-way southbound, adding the signal there, making it one-way southbound. So we brought that up in a conversation again because of the number of houses in that quadrant. What do I have, two hundred and thirty homes from McKinney over to Gateway Flats. So, yeah, for access to get out on the Sixth Avenue, and that's one reason we want to kind of protect the Fifth and O'Fallon intersection. Because that's the only way out safely. So, yeah, that is under consideration, but it's a matter of cost and approval by the state.
I think another thing to consider in all of this, especially with access onto the avenue, is if we are getting those bump outs, those bump outs are going to provide a way easier way for us to be able to edge out because the curb will be able to protect you from the oncoming traffic. So once we have those bump outs at those intersections at Walnut and Vine, if that's the way they're supposed to still go out there, your car will be able to edge out more towards the edge and be protected. So it's like, if we get those bump outs, I think automatically those will make it a safer entry onto the avenue.
We've also talked that even on the streets where you don't have the bump outs, that we could, we could, for the parking, so that it proves your, your, you should, you're trying.
What about the mirrors on the pole? We used to have one right there, was it Vine? Was it Vine in right there? I mean.
We want a Walnut, huh?
Is it Walnut? I mean, anytime you go up, you turn right, I mean, you're just gonna, kind of like pour and pray type.
Yeah, we had them up there.
But, all of those have to have mirrors, anything crossing that avenue at any of those intersections, you have to have mirrors.
So one of the problems of Walnut, because I was down there today, and I don't think people realize that there is no parking on, in front of the pharmacy.
Right.
So what, and one of the reasons they don't realize it is, the yellow line is gone. I mean, it's, it's just faded, so it should go from the corner to the middle of the big house past the pharmacy.
That would, that would be wonderful.
And if you painted that bright yellow and made sure that sign was up, that would definitely give you some more clearance. Because if, when a car is parked there.
You can't see.
You, you can't see. We should actually have no left turn on that Walnut Street there. If you, if, if you take a left turn out there, you're taking your right in your hands.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you really are.
Including Vine. It's the same with Vine, it's very dangerous.
Let's, let's go to the next slide. Yeah, so I think all that's a really good conversation and I think it just goes off the argument to further look into the urban terrace signal, try to get as many safe access points out as we can.
I do want to clarify, Scott, the bump outs are at McKinney, Dayton, and Berry. The bump outs in the projects that were reading to pour concrete, they don't include Urban, Vine, or Walnut.
Oh, I didn't know that.
They all keep on the project notes.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I'm not sure who the smart man was to put all this together, but, so this is something the council member neared for together a while ago. But I think it does a really good job just showing the traffic pattern and then just showing, again, we'll talk about, about having a second option to come out on Sixth Street. So that's just showing the urban terrace intersection, just how many people just would have to go from that. All right, so this is more of a longer-term solution. And this would be, if we could get the access point in urban terrace, I think that would be something that, that we looked at. So this red line would actually be constructing sidewalks and pouring concrete coming in and continuing that sidewalk all the way up and connecting it to Manhattan Boulevard. So you'd have that, or you could continue the straight down Fifth Street. So you would have basically in and out to Manhattan Boulevard and then Fifth Street. The only way out would be to go Fourth Street and go out to one of the other intersections or something. So that would be a permanent closure of that access from Fifth out to O'Fallon. And then this smaller case, this is, I mean, you could just put sidewalks from here and wrap it around without closing that off. So I think there is kind of an intermediate stuff that you could look into doing. But as far as pedestrian safety goes, this would really provide a safe passage for pedestrians really in all directions.
But with that, we can't get out that lane except for Berry.
And we live on Walnut.
And we live on Walnut.
Right.
So we can go to that, this and the Dayton to turn to get on the state, that's crazy.
That's gonna increase traffic on O'Fallon, at least just to get to the light.
This is.
You already said that Berry, that light Berry, if you're going up, you get seven seconds.
You're making much, you're saying you get seven seconds and during school hours and kids cross right there and it is high traffic, you're gonna set that light three or four times or you're just gonna run it. And I do it five days a week during school and I run it.
So this, I think it's more viable if you do the light at urban terrace, we don't have to go all the way to Berry, so that's the process there is.
I think we have a lot of this, our urban terrace use to the line.
Mrs. Volter was on council at the time that the Manhattan Harbor project was all drawn out. This was the original design for the access to Manhattan Harbor, if I'm not mistaken, cutting off Fifth Street, correct?
It was, and we didn't, and there was no exit coming off of Fifth Street.
Right.
That was closed.
Right, now this changed to the current arrangement. So when Cardinal Engineering first designed that intersection, this is pretty much what they designed.
Okay.
But because of the concern for the citizens and the access to O'Fallon, that's why it's, that's why it is like it is.
Sitting right there, our house, people are just gonna start using Family Dollar's parking lot to get through. You can just treat that as an additional intersection if that happens. And as much as I would like to say I'm a law-abiding citizen, there's no way you're gonna catch my ass going all the way to Urban Terrace to turn back around to get onto the intersection.
Eric, Eric, thank you over here.
Whatever, I'm still not gonna do it. So that would be something, not to be the squeaky wheel and say like, this is shit, but that is going to happen.
But Mr. Jaeger, you gave a temporary, it may not necessarily need to be temporary, solution. Where we build out that concrete wing, completing that, that half circle there, right there. And then we could do a sidewalk going across the, the avenue there.
You could do a crosswalk, no, a crosswalk here, yeah.
So that would be temp, maybe not temporary, that would provide that type of access, but also provide access out for Fifth.
In some places, they do that with an elevated sidewalk, like in Brother Cathedral, kind of, it's a speed bump.
Yep.
That also, you know, connects people because people can slow down with the speed bump, so.
But it's a good.
Pretty bubble.
I think with the striping, taking out that tree, moving the stop sign, I mean, that, I mean, it is going to probably be your fix.
So there's one other option, and this is all really good feedback, and that's why, we just wanted to get everything down on paper. We're not saying this is, this is the way to do it, we're just providing opposite feedback, so that's really good comments and really appreciate it. So this is similar, but a little bit different, where you still have access to Fifth Street going in the eastbound direction. So it'd be one-way for that short segment here, but then through coming up Fifth, you would still have to go, still have the same issues you're bringing up, or to get out, you would still, people either cut through the Dollar Store or have to look back around and go to one of the other intersections. But again, this, this kind of shows what the sidewalk could be if you didn't continue it through, but just continue that around the radius. But this would be the option where you'd be able to access Fifth coming in off of Fallon, which you wouldn't be able to access Fifth coming out. So it's similar, but a little bit, a little bit different. And then this one is where it's basically the same scenario, except that you've got two-way traffic on Fifth. Instead of it just being one-way, it would be two-way. Except for this would be one-way here, coming in, you still wouldn't be able to get out from Fifth, so it's the same, same scenario.
Taking that fourth.
Right, so to get out, you go out Fourth and then have to go to Berry or Urban Terrace to get out at a signal.
I don't think that's a viable solution for two reasons. Number one, Fourth Street is too narrow and that 100 block. Secondly, it's like Sarah said, people are gonna cut through there and go through Family Dollar. We cannot cut off Family Dollar's parking lot because that's the way their trucks come in. They come in this way, they back into their loading dock. So it'll always come around here, and I don't think we have the legal right actually to cut off their parking lot.
I think that's.
Nobody's gonna like that.
One other thing to think about is if we do get the Berry Street connection, is if you wanted to consider making Manhattan Boulevard one-way in from O'Fallon, just so you wouldn't have cars coming out, they would have to come out area, so that's, if that, if and when that project is built, it's just.
Push everybody by our main street. What's that look for?
Because you're moving a ton of traffic right into a school zone.
All right.
And then that's going to be a huge concern because we don't obviously have bus services in Dayton, everybody walks. That, I mean, we, I, I think that lights are already going to have tragedies that we don't really need. But once that Berry Street ends, it, I mean, it's already done double traffic right there, and that is all of our kids. Anyone playing a sporting event, you have your park, I mean.
I was trying to push traffic by our main street, but I, I see your point.
I mean, even if there's an accident, I mean, if a car even goes the wrong way, you're going right into our park. I mean, that would be huge.
So here, can you just put that very first slide up with the painting on it?
Sorry, it clicks.
It's all right.
And so just, I think everybody realizes that this is not an ideal intersection, it's tricky, so there's not gonna be a perfect solution. So I was just trying to figure out what the best scenario is, but this is not something you see very many places where you've got roads coming in that many in, in one, one spot.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't know. My, my initial thought is that we ought to do something and some of those solutions are quite a problem for the residents that live down there. I know I wouldn't want to drive four blocks to make a turn onto the avenue, but doing something like this, to me, seems like it could be done relatively quickly and inexpensively and might be somewhat effective in, in improving the safety issues down there. And we could put that sidewalk in, because the gentleman back there indicated to strike that O'Fallon up in the middle there, move that stop sign so it's more visible, take out those trees. I, I would think that's something that we might be able to do relatively quickly and might be a possible improvement, safety issues down there. We put a flashing stop sign there coming out of Manhattan Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
And from what I've heard, that's fairly effective.
When that bush is stuck.
When you, yeah, when the bush is.
Right, when the landscaping is.
What was the ballpark cost on that? Because I think we could use.
Fifteen hundred bucks, I think.
Fifteen hundred?
When did you put that?
Uh, six months to eight months ago.
I'd say that the two other stop signs here, here, because I know Queen City Riverbuses is getting a lot of traffic from out of town and they're not familiar with the intersection. I'd say putting those flashing stop signs here also, the residents using this access, they know there's a stop sign there. It's this traffic going north and south at O'Fallon that I think causes it, but it's on the stop sign, so. Between the bars, on the ground, the crosswalks, which makes it even more visible, and a flashing stop sign, that could be a good short-term, relatively inexpensive solution.
Now, I would reach out to the neighbors on Bellevue side regarding the blinking stoplight because if their bedroom's in the front, you're gonna have that blinking all night long, right there on those houses. I mean, that would be something to consider or to talk to them about.
How do you let it go, you?
No, that is something, they're in their rooms.
Technically, anything on that half side of the road is, that is responsibility and they would have.
Oh, Mr. Warner.
They would have to grant permission.
We ordered a blinking stop signs and we went in with Newport and got them for a cheaper price, worked back ordering more. So we could do the same.
We maybe did the same thing for our blinking stop sign that we bought with these, but since we don't know, Newport's about to buy a, a bunch.
We got it down in Bellevue too.
I think that's what we did as well.
I mean, and then if they did choose to get blink, blinking stop signs, I would utilize them by school.
Are you suggesting not here and all, and then do those to school or both?
Um, I could see one, I can't see one where the houses are because I think that would be very aggravating that night personally.
I'm with you.
But I'm just saying, if it isn't a budget, I would have blinking around our school, those stop signs. Like Hansman's right there, I mean.
Well, not, that, that doesn't confront us so much because that blinking stop sign would be in front of Bellevue.
Correct, yes.
Uh, which we do care about the residents.
Yes.
Their, their happiness. But if we could, so you're asking to put two more in the budget for us to put in schools?
Yeah.
All right, that, that makes sense, two more, put two more in the budget for schools.
Mr. Jaeger, so you proposed a stop sign in between Fourth and Manhattan. So as a resident who literally lives three houses on, inside of Fifth Ave, I've had it on that corner and we've had it where it currently is. And just based on what we've experienced, where it currently is actually seems to be safer than putting it right there at that edge. Because that way it puts us behind the entrance of Fourth, so that way if people are turning on, we're already stopped. And they can go ahead and turn on, rather than, my car actually will stick out into Fourth, so they can't even get in until I move forward. And if there's someone in Manhattan, then I gotta wait for them. So it actually is, in our experience, it's better off where it currently is located rather than moving it up and not floating. Correct, keeping it right there.
Because they can see oncoming traffic right there.
Yeah, yeah.
You're saying you have two, one there and.
God, no, because there used to be that way as well, so.
It used to be a floating stop sign, it used to be on, like, I think, the tire booth. And somebody would move it around every other day.
Yeah, some kids just screwing with us every now and then, move in, enjoy Manhattan. Now that it's stationary and where it is has been amazing in terms of traffic flow. Because even though people on Manhattan Drive aren't looking through that tree, I'm looking through that tree to see who's blowing through that stop sign. And that really helps when I'm there. Obviously, the, the tree is maybe slated to come down, so it helps me see oncoming traffic before I even nose out and have a potential accident.
As a resident on Fourth, I agree because I hate when someone stops there and then I feel like I'm in the way because I can't turn onto Fourth because there's a car at that stop sign and then people, traffic behind me is getting blocked up because I'm stuck in the middle of the intersection trying to turn onto Fourth. But you need to wait for everyone to move before you have to get that turn.
Well, the problem is, there's a crosswalk there, so people need to stop for the people crossing that crosswalk. You don't have a stop sign there.
I think that would be a ridiculous interaction.
You have more cars than pedestrians.
Pedestrians, the number of cars turning down Fourth, I think, is pretty minimal, uh, because there's not that many houses down there. One of the, one of the concepts that we discussed was turning Fifth Avenue, that 100 block into two-way. We've got two-way streets that are twenty feet wide in town. That would give, that would relieve a lot of the traffic off of Fourth Street, that 100 block of Fourth Street. And especially with the gate, and that way, if you're wanting to turn left off the avenue, you can turn off O'Fallon and go right down Fifth and go down Walnut that way. What are your thoughts on making that two-way?
You're gonna, you're gonna get rid of all of the parking on the other side of the street.
There's only one house on that side.
On, on this, on Fifth?
On the south side of Fifth.
So on, like, from this, if you're going on, on Fifth, if you're making. So on, like, from this, if you're going on, on Fifth, if you're making that a two-way, from this, from this intersection, where these houses are, there's, in front of our house, is a large area that no cars can park in.
Because of the business.
Because of the business.
Yeah.
So we, so you'd be taking it, you'd be taking away all of the parking for the, the people that are in the houses here, including, including ours. Because there's probably a fifteen, twenty-foot area in front of our house, in the house next to us, that we can't park in.
It's can't truck there?
No.
On the north side?
Yes. Because of the trucks for the business.
It's because of the printing.
You have the loading dock.
The loading dock.
So you're saying there's a yellow curb in here?
No, no.
Behind.
No. Nope. Yep.
Oh, because of the printer.
And you're affecting not only the three residents that you see there, but the three residential houses that are east of us, because it affects so much of that street.
A full block.
Just something to take in and consider, because we have two-way streets, I mean, that's much wider than many of our two-way streets in town. Giving the two-way access, as I said, would alleviate a lot of the left turns on to Fourth for people coming off the avenue and wanting to go into the 100 or 200, or even 300 block. And I don't know that it would add, add that much loading onto Fifth Avenue going eastbound, but would at least give them another option.
Plus you have built a pool of responsibility because of the yellow, long yellow lines.
True.
So what's the issue with just keeping the stop sign where it is, and rather than having the crosswalk where it currently is slated? We could just do that.
Yeah, that, yeah.
And make it an L.
I think that would be more dangerous at the northwest corner, because those bushes and rocks and everything here come all the way out.
Yeah, but they're coming out, that's what we.
No, the ones that, well, th- these will get trimmed down to exposed stops.
Yeah, but then overall, that last tree, they're taken out.
And this tree, they're taken out.
That's the tree that hides.
So you could put a ramp here, and have two crosswalks, and have the stop sign back, but it's just, are people gonna cross there? Are they still gonna just keep crossing here?
They'll, they'll go there, that's easiest way to go.
And I think it's safer for the pedestrians to be back east a little bit.
Away from the traffic, yeah.
And Ellie, I, I agree with that crosswalk right where it's at, because most people walking, they're either gonna park in front of your house, or they're gonna park in Family Dollar on the avenue to go wa- walk the floodway.
But that's not where they cross, they actually cross at, on the west side corner than they do on the east side corner. I'm not trying to be the squeaky wheel, but someone, so.
Yep.
May I approach?
Yeah.
So rather than them park, or walking here, most of them are actually parking in that abandoned grocery store, and walking through and cutting through right here. Yes, or they're walking all the way over and then cutting through this way. Very few people cross the street here.
Why are they doing that with no sidewalk over there?
Well, if we put the crosswalk in it, fourth is on the walk-in it, if they don't walk in it, then it would be one of those things that's your fault.
That's where they're close to go, okay.
All I'm saying, as a resident who drives this every day of their life, having the stop sign here is just better.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's the scientific way of saying it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so if we're doing a stop, a stop, and a stop, it just, doesn't make fiscal sense, or just common sense. So here, and if people are gonna jaywalk, they're gonna jaywalk whether you put a crosswalk in or not.
Could you put the crosswalk back between, so where, I think, where they, where Fourth and Fifth, where Fourth and Fifth meet, right there, and then have a cross, the crosswalk going from there, because you'd wrap the sidewalk around, and they can just walk right across there. Because the stop sign, if you kept it where it is, the stop sign would be right there. Just, you push the, you push the crosswalk back to the, the cross of Fourth and Fifth.
They're not gonna go there, they're gonna go to the sidewalk, they're not, they're not.
I don't know, but it would, if we're, if you're wanting, if you're wanting a, a crosswalk to go up from one side of Fifth to the other, and it's not in the middle of an intersection, because that currently, if you left the stop sign there, it'd be in the middle of the intersection. But if you push the stop sign where it is on proposed, then it's out of the.
People turn right, you go to Fourth.
I mean, you could raise it, you could do something to act, make people slow down, pedestrians, that's something we could look at too, as well. Speed, have a speed continuing.
I feel like the, the crosswalk is safer here than it is here, especially if you take the stop sign out, because you've got cars coming in, maybe you can have time to get speeds that are, when they're ready to just turn, they don't see a pedestrian in that crosswalk, so it's not exactly protected where they're crossing here, it's totally visible by all three.
Well, you'd have to take out more of that, more of that island, because there's no sidewalk there.
Just that salvia.
Only sidewalks on the right side.
Well, but aren't you gonna create another crosswalk there to go across to the sidewalk?
Yeah, but it'd be a stop decision.
In reality, if you put that crosswalk there, the only thing we'll have to take out is that salvia bush that's already causing an issue, because it grows so tall and covers that stop sign.
Yeah, I don't think you would take out a lot there, I think you're right.
Yeah.
There's a sidewalk.
Well, but the crosswalk would be kind of an L, would go across and then across to the sidewalk. And I think what Mr. Yeager is saying is, so you got people crossing here, and you got people turning, and a wham.
Well, if they actually stop the stop sign, they'll, they'll not hit the pedestrian.
I had a quick question about that, last week, we sat out there in front of Sarah's house, and for over an hour, and Ben kept count, and ninety-one cars stopped, and ninety-six cars did not. And kind of, some of them rocking through, but a lot of them knew it was just a little slowdown and a little kind of a cavalier attitude, I thought, for five stop signs, and I was wondering if we could just sprinkle more police over there too, just to make it hurt a little bit. Like, you know, you, like, oh, wow, stop signs.
You get.
What?
Could pay for those stop signs.
Yeah, I don't know, just sort of in general, I know it's not ideal, and nobody knows what is going on, and they are, you know, for the most part, being careful, but they're not stopping, and, um, they didn't see one of those five, you know, and they're rocking through. And then sometimes there was, you were sitting there where they'd go in, kind of get confused, and then make the big crazy U-turn, and then come down the wrong way on the street, so we can scream at them wrong way, it was just kind of.
Who was this one guy?
It was two, was that woman?
Black Jeep, that guy, one of them being seventeen years old.
Well, okay, that kid, whatever. There, there was, seemed to be ambiguity, but not a lot of stopping, considering there are five stop signs there, I just thought.
I agree, I mean, I said there.
A little, couple tickets here and there.
I know, but if you sit an officer there, they're gonna stop, it's just, I mean, you go to a stationary.
You would feel mental thing, like.
I, I mean, you got like two officers on duty during a shift, three max, and that's our night shift. You have a whole city, I mean.
I know.
But still, I mean, if you put an officer there, they're gonna stop, that's the same way, I would follow.
Or sitting on Fifth, they could see him blow through that one on O'Fallon.
You could do it to Sarah's house.
Like Russia, four to six.
Yeah, no one's looking on Fifth Street to pass. Just so you know, it's not always clear, you know. Yeah, just occasionally, huh huh.
Mr. Yeager, if the city decided to do something, this option, is it possible that we would still take the continuing options, where we would build out southbound O'Fallon's sidewalk back out, and move the, the stop sign back to a street?
This?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you could, it could be, city's got how to do that, but you could, you could do the stripe first and see how it worked, and then go the sidewalk, yeah, it's, it's a lot easier to remove a stripe than it is a sidewalk, so that's.
If you have a biker down with the raised ones.
It should definitely be a sidewalk, it's a dangerous interaction between pedestrians and cars here.
That would be much more of a traffic calming device to have the sidewalk in there.
Right across that, that blink stop sign.
I, I recommend that, because I live on Fourth, and I thought it would turn lane. I didn't know, personally, I pulled into that, every time I go to that stop sign, I'm pulling off to the side, so. Like, this means, it's the first time I learned that it wasn't a turn lane, so.
Well, and you can angle straight towards Manhattan.
Yeah, and then you don't see the stop sign on the other side at all. If, if you're in, but we're talking about the curve, or the turn lane, you won't see this stop sign at all.
You're saying it would be above the sidewalk?
No, I'm saying as it is now, it's, like she said, she's not seeing where the second, the, you know, the stop sign is actually now. You wouldn't see it at all now.
One of the long-term solutions that was also discussed was widening that block between Fifth and Sixth on O'Fallon, to move, pretty much take out those pine trees, move the sidewalk back to there, and take it to three lanes wide, or actually four lanes wide, almost. And that'd make it even at the crosswalk going to the other side of Sixth Avenue, going towards the, uh, grocery store. The problem with that is, it's very expensive, because A, as you indicated on the property lines, the property actually belongs to Family Dollar, and B, you've got utility poles all along there too.
Right.
Uh, which are real expensive to move. That's maybe a long-term solution, but an expensive one that we'd have to figure out who's gonna pay for.
Okay, so my comment would be, to put in the sidewalks, we're gonna need money, and it's gonna take time. I mean, no offense, but we know how long it takes to get something done around here, in that manner. So can, as a city, we can agree that obviously they need resolution ASAP, that we discussed getting the tree out, the bush out, updating all the markers, and at least give them something, instead of saying, I'm gonna get to it in five years, when we get that sidewalk in, where this is something we can give them soon.
This solution can be done relatively quickly.
Okay.
In defense, though, when we say that we're trying to do sidewalks, and, and I, I think we're all a little sore from how long it's taken us to get the Sixth Avenue and the High Road done, it's taken us that long because of the state.
Correct, but I'm just saying, they need a fix now.
This could move faster, but you were right when you say that.
Do you know what I mean?
Something like this to move really quick.
Yes, they don't want something we can get in a year.
This could be done in months versus years.
Yes. I'd say this is something we can do, and then updating the line by the avenue, pharmacy.
Yes.
I mean, but all of our lines right there are probably could be updated and a little more visible.
I've got a lot of notes, and I'm gonna do them tomorrow.
So does that fix work for you guys, for a temporary, like, with, you know what I mean?
Certainly, or Dale would now.
So do we need a motion to authorize the city manager, the mayor, and the engineer to draft the plan?
It hurt.
Bring it back to the next council meeting for approval? Well, they don't, they wouldn't even know.
I was gonna say, they would need to update the lines and that, I mean.
Just kind of follow what I've heard tonight, but follow this plan and.
Yeah.
Direct us to do that?
Yeah.
Do you want to make directions, make a motion, so we'll second, probably though.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we.
I'll just, or what, does Bellevue, do you want to have a conversation too, just because?
Mr. Warren.
Yeah, we probably ought to be here. So we're looking at doing some stripes here, we need your, we need, we need probably get you involved in this discussion, because half this street belongs to the city of Bellevue.
Right.
And so.
We'll do what, what you perceive needs to be done.
Okay, we'll, we'll put together something, and then I'll send it to you, just make sure, run it up the flag, make sure it works for you guys.
Okay.
Because I know half that street belongs to you all, so anything that we do.
We could have a conversation with Public Safety, at least tomorrow, and make sure that there weren't. I think it's gonna be totally fine, but I think it'd be good to have, at the staff meeting, have a quick.
We have a staff meeting.
One thirty, Wednesday, and this will go on the agenda.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
And really, the only thing that affects Bellevue is that one bar stripe right there on the side of O'Fallon.
Maybe a little encroachment over past Family Dollar.
And the crosswalk.
Then the double yellow.
But doing something to be too big.
Well, the only other solution we have is to buy Family Dollar and make it a ten-way roundabout.
I like the roundabout idea, so if you wanna.
Yeah, but it'd come all the way down here on Sixth. It'd take me an hour to get home. So you want a motion, or?
You're the main one.
Plot, I'll make a motion that we authorize the, the city manager, mayor, and then engineer to, you know, ahead and use this as a guide to, uh, immediately affect the change down there at the intersection of Fifth and O'Fallon, and make it safer for residents.
With the exception of.
The stop sign.
With that, one stop sign.
Does that, do we remember the stop signs?
Yeah, leave it there.
As I say, leave that one there.
Leave the stop sign there, leave the crosswalk there, okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna say, I think this approval was just for the yellow, the dry, the crosswalks, the removal of those two bushes.
Yep.
And that's it, I mean, that's something we can give.
Now.
Yeah. And then see how that does, but I agree with you, the stop sign works that, because I do drive daily too, um, it, it does make sense. And it does let you see the oncoming traffic that turn on Fourth, which is limited, but it is now.
We will need to get permission from the property owner, Manhattan Boulevard Property Builder Association, whatever it is, to take those trees down and put concrete in where that gravel is, so hopefully, they'll read, I don't, candidate, they would, uh, have a problem with that. I just want to make sure you all know I can get that permission.
Or you can tell them, like, we're gonna station a cop here, and it's gonna be majority of your residents, if you think that you don't want that.
I think they'll be fine with it, but I just gotta make sure that they know that before we do it.
Alright, so motion. Do it second.
I know, guys.
Second, then first. Uh, remember, Nima's been the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any intentions? Eyes have it? We'll get to work on that this week. Uh, we're about to move for adjournment, but, uh, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Shepherd for, uh, bringing this to everyone's attention tonight. Appreciate that, and for the court. Second of all, uh, we, we, we lost a great member of our community this week with, uh, Ms. Roseanne Cherry. Uh, so our, our thoughts, our, our prayers, all those good things, go out to her family and our community, because she was huge to this community. Uh, she's greatly missed, and, uh, keep her and her family here for us. So with that, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Mary, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes, any intentions?